I'd like to call this meeting to order. The Bearable School Board of Education, Monday, September the 23rd, 2013, with roll call. Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Mr. McNevin.
Here.
Mr. Mearing.
Here.
Mr. Mortimer.
Here.
Ms. Riley.
Here.
Mr. Vedro.
Here.
And Vodak here. Continue with a pledge, which is behind the counter. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the September the 9th, 2013 meeting as printed.
I move to approve of it.
Second.
Motion by Mearing, seconded by Vedro. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion and minutes approved and carried. Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled Correspondence. I have none. Any other board members with correspondence? Hearing none. Administrative correspondence? Hearing none. Move to the section of the agenda entitled Public Viewpoints. Is there anyone here for public viewpoints tonight? If you would please approach the mic and state your name.
I'll go with the ear.
Talk to the ear.
My name is Emily Orenzie, and I wanted to come to talk to you tonight about some of the possible insurance changes you'll be hearing about. I'm a teacher at the middle school and the high school and various other buildings throughout the year. I'm a club advisor and a volunteer. I'm also a member of the BEA Exec Board. Most importantly, I'm a parent of two young children, wife to a bearable coach, and an active community member. I want to talk to you tonight about, as collaborators, in making Bearable one of the best places to live and work. I've heard that mission articulated by the BEA, our administrators, and you, our school board. I understand that you'll be presented tonight with some options for dealing with possible increases in insurance costs. I wanted to come here to draw your attention to the effects of some of these changes and also perceptions that many teachers have regarding these changes. I understand that you'll be looking at increasing co-pays for various things as a way to offset the increased premiums that may be coming. Please allow me to explain what it looks like for many teachers. For the teacher who's given years to the Bearable School District, it looks like losing what they have sacrificed for and worked hard to earn. Teachers have historically taken small or no salary increases in favor of better healthcare coverage. Today, they are seeing those insurance benefits eroded and are taking home less now than they did several years ago. For the teacher who's been here just a few years, it looks like yet another cut to their take-home pay, and the future does not look enticing. For the parent of a young child, it's another reason to pause and decide if she can wait another night with a fever and the pain because she can't find the now $120 for the fourth office visit with the ear infection that just won't go away. The decision becomes a matter of going back to the doctor for the right medication or taking another sick day, requiring the district to pay a sub, and hoping things improve. For the new teacher, it looks like yet another reason why he can't afford to take care of his own health and see his doctors. When I watched teachers learn about this next proposed increase for insurance co-pays, almost every teacher had the same reaction. I saw them drop their heads and say things like, "When will this stop? My take-home pay is going down, and now I have to pay more to access my insurance." I'm telling you these things only to inform you of the possible consequences as you learn about your options and plan for teacher compensation. Teachers are feeling the reduction in benefits, and as you saw this summer, are increasingly seeking living wages and security elsewhere. Teachers need to know that they are valued for the work they do and are compensated fairly. I heard at the annual meeting about how we lost a high number of teachers over the summer to other districts for financial reasons. Often, it is our best teachers who are sought after and recruited by other districts and agencies. As a teacher, I want to see my colleagues stay so that they can continue the work that we have begun. As a parent, I want to see my kids' teachers secure in their benefits and focused on good teaching. As a community member, I want to see our Bearable Schools attract and keep highly trained and high-performing teachers. I want to see the professional development dollars we invest in our teachers staying in our schools and not walking away for more security in another district. I appreciate your time, and I look forward to your collaboration with all of our stakeholders to make our Bearable Schools the best place to work and learn. I encourage you to reach out to our Bearable educators and hear more about how the changes affect them. Please consider this as you decide how to compensate our Bearable teachers. Thank you.
Any other public viewpoints? Any other public viewpoints? Any other public viewpoints? Hearing none. I'd like to move on to the portion of the agenda entitled Staff and Student Recognition, and for that, I'm going to turn to Dr. Ritzenthaler.
Well, as we heard during the assessment of our technology, infrastructure, and services, and direction and vision here in this district, we were provided with a lot of information and data that really highlighted the work of this department. And I don't really recall highlighting the professionals within a whole department before, but this department certainly deserves that acknowledgement. And so, tonight, the Technology Services Department, Matt Pellon, Jesse Nyholm, Mike Pullen, Glenn Watson, Corey Griffin, Jake Labits -- He's hiding back there behind the bookcase -- and Robin Wepping. And we know that it takes all of you working together to produce the kind of quality of customer service that you do, leadership, and vision in our district. So, we have a recognition here from the sign by the board president that we hope you will hang in your department as a reminder of the appreciation. If we could have you stand up so everybody could see you. Did you want to say anything, Matt, for anybody?
I'm very fortunate to work with such a great group of people, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled Reports, and under Reports, we have Facility Process Update. I guess first of all, we can talk about the community survey timeline. The survey closes tomorrow. And after that, we will have, the following week, an update and a release of the survey response. We will have a presentation of those results at the board meeting on the 28th of October, and that will be the time that we will present the survey findings. Timeline moving forward, we can certainly go into it in more detail, but obviously, the first thing is to review the results of the survey and move forward. I don't know, Dr. Ritzenthaler, do you want to add anything?
Well, the surveys were coming in very nicely, and I checked them last week. I didn't get a chance to check today. We had over 1,200 responses before we sent out the reminders to staff and parents. Did you happen to--
During, we're up to 1,400 towards the end of last--
1,400. Okay. So, that's pretty good.
Any board members have any questions about that process?
The only thing is, what we received, the facilities planning schedule, is just a draft copy, and so, until we get those results, these are just like general guideline timelines that we'll have to get to once we get to the survey and those things. So, that's the only comment that I have on it. Nothing is cast in stone at this point.
Okay. As you can tell, we have half of the board in green chairs, I think. Half of the board in other than green chairs. We've got a couple different variables of some furniture that the district has on loan, which includes the tables. Our intention was to have a meeting in the classroom setting so that we could look at not only the new furniture, but the old furniture side by side with the new.
There you go. That's how you do it. Ed likes that.
I understand why that--
Can you get one for here?
Is that one-- Is that to use? Is that how it's made?
They hold their hand here. You've been writing a message.
I think I had teachers who would have liked those when I was a kid.
Well, I mean, these were in your school, correct?
Yeah.
Could you maybe give us a little bit of feedback of at least how long they've been there and the response, at least in the classroom they were in?
They've been there for a couple of weeks now, and both the teachers and the students report that, you know, they like them in terms of their comfort and their flexibility, in terms of being able to break down and get into different groupings and collaborate. So, it's been generally a very positive experience for the teachers.
And there are pictures on the PowerPoint here that are looping, just showing the students using the furniture. And you can see that in that last picture, there are some of the chairs that you four are sitting in, or you three are sitting in, that have a tablet that swings around, too, so they can push up to each other and make a table with their tablets, or they can be individual like what you're sitting in tonight.
Does this mean the students don't have to walk from class to class?
Then we just roll them down the hall.
Board have any questions? Further questions?
Have they been holding up for sturdiness here, or--
It's only been a couple of weeks, but so far, so good.
We'll see if they hold up tonight.
Yeah, this is a real test.
Martha, do you want to remind the board about the ordering and the transition?
Sure. We're meeting with EUA next week or the week after. Early-- Yeah, next week. Just to go over what John and the teachers have liked, disliked about it, the reason for piloting was to make sure, before we make such a large purchase, we're getting the furniture that's going to work for the teachers and the students. So, we'll be meeting with them, and then we'll start working on the bid, and hopefully we will get furniture in over the week of Christmas break and get it installed. If you remember, you approved approximately $40,000 to furnish, hopefully, four classrooms at least in the middle school.
And we did get a variety of different sizes and styles of tables to try to figure out what was best for the instruction that was going on in that particular classroom.
I guess I would ask, while you're talking to these people, how much trouble do they have with the wheels?
Sure.
And Ed, just so you know, we're testing-- I think we're testing the wheels on both types of floors?
Yes.
Carpet and tile, because they are different casters that are used. So, we've taken that into consideration as we pilot this furniture.
Well, I-- When I heard this 21st century furniture from EUA and the idea that it changes the learning environment, I thought that was the latest sales pitch from a slick furniture salesperson. And so, I was a doubting Thomas, and I got in the classroom right away to see what they're at. When you're there for 88 minutes, this is very comfortable compared to the stuff that was designed in the '30s and '40s and '50s and has been there since the '50s, '60s, and '70s. I got a report firsthand from an eighth grader up there that said, "Mrs. Grogan's got some awesome furniture." I talked to Sue at Open House, and I said, "Well, what about the..." You know, I thought with kids and how fidgety they are, what they ever said still, and she said, "Obviously, the first couple of days, kids are enjoying their mobility, but doesn't it kind of settle right in?" I talked to Mr. Whittoon in his science class, and he's got half and half. And he said, "You're killing me, half and half, because..."
Everybody wants to sit in the premium seats.
Everybody wants to get in the premium seats, and he said, "You know, I can quickly regroup my class, and I can move them," and he goes, "And half the class is ready to go, and in no time flat, the other half the class is dragging and screeching and trying to group desks together." He said, "You can really see how diametrically opposed the two sets of furniture are." I got to admit, I'm a believer. It's all made by steel cases, or at least these are steel cases. And they seem to be a reputable manufacturer. I know they're very popular in the business community for the products that they make. So, I'm hoping when you buy a brand name like that, you're buying some engineering, some durability. They handle most eighth graders, so. So, anyway.
Okay. Anything further on furniture?
Anything else, Martha, on furniture, other facility? Are we--
That's under new business. Moving along on the agenda, brings us to the portion entitled Continuous School Improvement. And let's spend a few minutes discussing the ACT results that were included in your board packet.
When you say a few, is that a hint?
No.
I did provide a color copy on your tables, because sometimes I think it's easier to see with that color hard copy. So, if you please look at that just again. The purpose of this assessment, the results indicate how prepared our students are for the college or workforce upon graduating from high school, and they're assessed in English, reading, math, and science. If you look at Table 1, there, it shows our five-year trends, and our most recent graduates, 2013, is listed in bold on the very bottom of that first table. As you look across, you can see that there's noted growth primarily in reading. We had a full point in growth. Keep in mind, we're not comparing the same students. It's different cohorts of students, so we'll want to watch that trend, and that's why it's important to have five years' worth of trends. You might also note that we had less participation with students. However, our class of 2012, we had 268 students, 58% then participated. Our 2013 graduating class is a bit smaller with 232 students, so when we look at the percentage, 56% of our students participated. So, we want to obviously continue to see that increased participation, and I'll talk about the movement with the state here towards the end of this presentation. So, again, it's just a trend that we want to continue to watch, and we're happy to see the growth, but we want to continue to see that growth over the next couple of years. If you look at Figure 1 at the bottom, that looks at the percent of students that are college and career-ready based on the benchmark.
We need to continue to watch. We saw a significant dip there. When we think about when the students took the WKC, that's the only assessment that's represented in this data, they took that last fall, so it's a measure of the school year prior. At that time, we didn't have any school-wide intervention at North Freedom. So, it's important to think about the context of this data, think about what actions have we taken as a district or as a building to move forward. And really, to close gaps, you need to focus on interventions for students and make sure students have access to, equitable access to their curriculum. You have questions? I can tell.
Yeah. There's no way not, because of the low count, there's no way not to lump these students together into a super group. together into a super group.
Correct.
We can't look at the data specifically.
We can as an internal staff, we can pull out those individual students, but...
That's not how it's collated.
Correct, correct.
And even though they're small groups, do you see particular patterns with different groups? Even though they're small, did you detect that all we really need to address is this particular group?
Like students with disabilities versus E L L.
Yes.
Not yet. One of our next steps is to meet, we're meeting as a North Freedom staff to really dig deeper into their data. You're just seeing the summary report card.
Oh, I know.
There's a 20-page detailed report card that allows us then to cross-reference our tools of data to look and see which students are we talking about, where did we experience some issues that we need to address.
And again, because with a small population, there may be some things with just particular individual students.
Sure. I think the key too is, as Lori mentioned, you have to have structured interventions in place. And that's been a process in our district.
And we did it.
And as you know, G L W kind of led that effort with having that structured time set up and modeled that for others. And we learned as we went through that process, and then other schools started to develop interventions that worked for them. I think we're finding that you're tightening that intervention time up at North Freedom, and so there is a delay in seeing those results. And a few kids in a small school can make quite a difference in those fluctuations and swings and scores too.
That's a great segue. You know, as I look at the district report card and look at the strengths and areas for growth for each of our buildings, each building has a different story, but there are definite trends. If we want to target the one priority area where we need to grow the most across the district, it's the top one, student achievement, which is just a straight measure of how many kids scored proficient or advanced in reading and math, which, what is that primarily based on? I was hoping you wouldn't make me say it. Any administrators, what is that primarily based on?
Reading and math.
Right, reading and math, but there's a direct correlation with affluence too.
I'll see.
And if you look at our demographics, two images in the bottom left-hand corner, you can see right now as a district, last year we were 44.9% free and reduced, and this year we're closer to 50% across the district. And that number's going to continue to increase. That's not to excuse away our results because it's the rigor that Glenn was describing is reading and math, but it's the rigor in our coursework that we need to work on then as a district across and make sure our students meet those benchmarks. The area where... Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just want to also point out that as that number increases, which is a societal challenge that our teachers and our administrators are dealt and have no control over, we as a board must be dedicated and the district must be dedicated to recognize that school is the last bastion of support for these young children. In many cases, we have to feed them. In many cases, we have to clothe them. And in all cases, we have to educate them. And if the first two are not in place, then the last one is very difficult to succeed in terms of getting these scores. These things must be understood in context.
Right. And yet, the area across the district we were the strongest was closing gaps.
And that's because we're good!
And that's what we're really focused, I'd rather have the highest area in closing gaps than in student achievement, to be honest, because that means what we're doing makes a difference for all kids regardless of their background.
The only issue on student achievement, and again, not here, because I think we do a tremendous job with our upper-end kids, but once they meet that upper level, there is no extra credit for going above that level, is there? No. But we, again, I'm not saying that we don't address those kids.
Right.
We certainly are miles ahead of everybody else.
Right, right. So the next steps, oh, actually, one of the things I'm really excited about too that I would be remiss in not pointing out, in the bottom corner here, it shows the last five years of, again, proficient and advanced for reading and math. We are the light blue across, and then the dark blue is the state, again, state being the state. But if you look at our progress in reading and math over the past three years, there is a trend of increasing across the past three years. So that's something to continue to watch and monitor, and that's pretty exciting in my opinion. The next steps with this data, we're going to do data dives, we're calling them at each of the building levels with representative teams of teachers to see, again, target our efforts to make sure that we're focusing our efforts where it's needed most. This work that we're doing, or what the results that we're seeing validates the work we're doing with our R T I, or Response Intervention School Improvement Framework. And we're gearing up already for the next window of the W K C. So our kids are taking the W K C again at the end of October, the first weeks of November, and then you're going to see that data represented this time next year on the next report cards.
And is this then the last offering of the W K C?
This is the last year of the W K C for reading and math. We still have the W K C for fourth, eighth, and tenth grade for science, social studies, and language arts, that's a state statute, and then the reading and math is a federal movement with the Smarter Balanced Assessment on.
And was the 20 pages with the details, is that the website right there?
Yep, absolutely. Yep. Any other questions regarding the school report cards? I think you should be celebrating, it's a good story. Okay. I'll take this year, we'll see what next year brings. We also want to talk about gifted and talented certification, and on your tables you have a handout or a flyer regarding that. And I'm going to move back here where mine and mine are. And I have two ladies, if you'd like to come up and stand with me, I'll introduce you. Tonight I have Dr. Pam Klinkenberg, who is here from U W Whitewater, she's a professor of educational foundations. And I also have Kathy Shader, and she's the Outreach Program Manager or Continuing Education at UW Stevens Point. And what you have on your table is a flyer that articulates a plan to collaborate with these two institutions to provide all of our teachers in the district an opportunity to add a certification to their license for gifted and talented. This idea came to us this summer when we had a team at UW Whitewater attending the challenge, the title again, challenging advanced learners at Cal. Yes, we call it the CAL, it's all about acronyms. And what we'd like to propose, you can see it takes 12 credits to add on a certification, this is a professional development area for our staff because it'll help our teachers better be responsive to student needs, and what's good for gifted and talented students is good for all students. And we would like to do this coursework during our P L C structure, where the UW staff would come and work with us over the course of the next three school years, starting this spring, and then do two courses with us fall and spring next year, and then one more the following fall. And allow our teachers to do that coursework here while they're at work, but also blended with some online learning, do it as a cohort, receive that certification, and they would have access to their credit reimbursement for that, so it's a very manageable cost for our staff to add that certification. It's a win for our students because their needs will be better met, it's a win for our teachers, they feel supported doing the work that they're doing, and I think it's a win for us as a district. It would be nice to say to our community and to others outside the community that Baraboo has 20, 30, 40% of our staff certified to teach gifted and talented. So I'm going to just ask these two young ladies to just maybe speak to the value of that certification and how we can collaborate with you. And they're really here just to answer questions, not to do any formal presentation. Let's turn to Pam for a second.
But you know, professors, we can talk for hours just off the cuff. I'll just tell you a little bit about the certification. This is a small field, but in terms of investment in students, we're not talking about an old-fashioned model of gifted education where you might sort of skim off the top 3% or 5% and give them special programming. Gifted education nationally has moved to a much more inclusive strategy, and we're talking about strategies that are appropriate for an awful lot of kids. So the types of things, you know, 21st century skills in gifted education, those have been happening for decades. So it's about moving those kinds of strategies and those kinds of opportunities and challenging kids appropriately into a much broader range of kids. So one of the things we would do in this, I would actually be teaching the first course, assuming this gets approved, in the spring, yeah, in the spring semester, and we would meet in person four times, we would be online the rest of the time. Now, I'm one of those people who had to be dragged kicking and screaming into teaching online, but my favorite format now is the hybrid format where you meet face-to-face several times, and then you follow it up and you fit people's very, very busy schedules. And they can do discussions and drop assignments electronically and things like that, so we've found that format works pretty well. So we're very excited about this opportunity. We've done small cohorts before, we have not done like a full cohort from a single district. So we're really looking forward to trying that out in this particular district especially because it is such a high-achieving district. And you all have been very supportive of gifted education, I know something about what you do already, and we're looking at expanding some of those things for other kids. And it's not exactly a trickle-down concept, it's more like a mushrooming concept, I think.
I'll answer any questions. I work mostly with the logistics around the courses. And speaking for our faculty at UW Stevens Point would model their classes in a very similar way in terms of the hybrid format, working with the teachers here in the district and then also with an online component of it. So we always welcome, we've been partnering with Whitewater on the certification for the last five years?
At least.
Four to five years. Very excited about it, it's been a great partnership for both institutions, and we always welcome opportunities to work with the district, so.
I attended a gifted and talented conference at Whitewater several years ago, and I had been reading about it, I think, for a year or two beforehand. I know that your institution is really a leader in our state and beyond perhaps in gifted and talented training for teachers. So I throw my support behind this without reservation. I think the way you've come up with a plan that allows teachers to take part as cohorts over, you know, over four semesters and get 12 credits, this is fantastic.
And we talked about we could look at this for other opportunities like reading specialist licensure or bilingual licensure. So if it works for us...
Well, this board has also made a commitment to ensure the fact that as we are raising the bottom, we're not collapsing the top. So this kind of a program for our students and for our teachers is definitely a part of our strategic plan, and we appreciate your being here and the programs that you have developed. And as Mo has indicated, you have my full support as a former educator.
One question, and Pam, maybe you can address these numbers and so forth, and again, because gifted and talented, many times there's a lot of perception issues that people lay out. We talked about multiple tiers. Could you maybe give us percentages and like, you know, the effects that this could have, not only with our really top students, but those that are doing pretty good in the other levels and what those numbers could be?
You know, the state, we used to have this pyramid model in the state for gifted education, you might be familiar with that, and that's kind of out the door now.
Yeah.
The state does not specify percentages.
Oh, I know.
In terms of the children that might benefit, I would say anywhere, I'm hesitant to give a...
I know, because if you think about our R T I model, and we are a tiered district with R T I.
Yes.
I think all...
Maybe that's what my mind is playing around, is the R T I model.
I really feel that a lot of the strategies that are learned to meet the needs of gifted and talented can be adapted and transferred to any...
All students.
Right. So it really has an impact on all students, in my opinion.
Yeah, as we lift the top, everything, even the bottom, we lift.
A lot of it's about creative problem solving, communication skills, a lot of those similar to soft skills earlier.
21st century skills that we're committed to.
It's not strictly academics, it's also creative and critical thinking skills.
Good. I'm behind you.
I'll give you credit for working out the logistics within the university system because I know that's hard.
It has been a struggle, it has been a struggle. We've been working on this since, I said, the summer, but Scott Peters couldn't be here today, and he's been really influential in making this happen, and so it's Pam indicated we would be first in our area to try something like this, so.
But again, we can move this in other areas too.
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, and finally, it's important to recognize that this is not about academic achievement, this is about creative, innovative, social. It identifies the uniqueness in a lot of different arenas and supports that.
Any further questions? Thank you very much, all of us. I just want to kind of recap the last three things we talked about because as administrators, I'm sure there's plenty of credit goes around for our A C T results, plenty of credit that needs to be given for the school and district accountability report cards, and also for the implementation of the gifted and talented teacher certification. But we have a unique situation tonight in that we have a number of our teachers with us, and you're the boots on the ground, you're in the classroom, and the administrative team can come up with whatever great concept, gifted and talented certification, if you don't do it, if you're not part of it, and if you don't buy into it, it doesn't matter. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank you guys for all that you do to help make the accolades that the district gets possible, and certainly the board takes a little bit of credit, and I do mean a little bit of credit. So thank you for being with us tonight. Brings us to the... Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled Personnel Recommendations. I'm not aware of any approval of resignations. I'm not aware of any approval of new hires, however, we do have a recent new hire that I would like to introduce. He's with us tonight, Mr. Langcamp, Jim Langcamp, our Director of Activity Programming. Welcome to Baraboo. One board member said a couple of weeks ago, "You finally saw the light and left that other town to the..." I'll let that go.
Yeah, you bet.
He did show up for the very first meeting with a T-Bird shirt on. I just wanted, we were very happy to see that, so.
Awesome. I am not aware of any approval of long-term substitute positions.
Yeah, we have to get one.
We do have one. Gloria Carlson for third grade at G L W, so I would entertain a motion for the approval of that long-term substitute position.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. And that brings us to last on personnel, the high school intramural weight room. I'm not aware of the background, so Crystal, if you want to share what we're...
That proposal came from, I don't remember, I think probably Erin, it's the same individual involved, but we're making a recommendation to make that shift from the basketball to the intramural weight.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by McNeven, seconded by Cummings. Any discussion?
Has there been a loss of interest in intramural basketball or...
I'm not sure about that, but I do know that we've had students working in the weight room, and actually, we might have some people here.
They only had two kids at times showing up for intramural basketball.
Okay.
At the sixth grade level, they weren't getting any, very little participation, and the weightlifting really helped benefit a lot of athletes, so they thought the trade-off would be great. And they did accept the eighth grade basketball, but they just weren't grasping the intramural program very much.
Are we getting some in the intramural weight room that aren't necessarily in athletics or just, you know, just...
I believe so.
Okay, good.
At middle school, yes.
Middle school, yeah.
Yeah.
You know.
And the reason it's coming before the board is because we did not have the weight room as part of the co-curriculars when that was presented in the fall.
Having a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled Consent. For that, I will turn to Chair of Finance, Mr. McNeven.
Always one of the favorite parts of the agenda for me. The Finance Committee reviewed the receipts and disbursements, and those were sent out to all board members, and I would move to... I will second that.
Having a motion by McNeven, seconded by Cummings, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to New Business. And first up is the Dean Insurance Options Discussion, and we have two board members that have spouses that are on the insurance who will afford them the opportunity to leave us temporarily. them the opportunity to leave us temporarily.
Turn your back a lemonade.
The insurance option discussion originated at the Personnel Committee. We met a month or so ago and looked at some of the potential options on the table. And obviously, it is certainly a topic of discussion that's, needs to include more than just the Personnel Committee. And what we asked Director of Business Services, Ms. Baldwin, to put together for us were some potential options. And we have with us tonight, Mr. Lewison, who is here to help answer any questions that may come up, or at least get answers to questions if they may come up. And I want to start off by saying, I think that the majority, if not all, of the board that's sitting up here certainly understands the points that were made by Ms. Orenzi. I just want to make sure that there's an understanding that the board also has a responsibility to manage our expenses, and part of managing our expenses is managing our health care. And that's what the discussion is about tonight. No decision on anything need be made tonight. It is on our agenda for the fourteenth of October, I believe. So Ms. Baldwin.
So as Cummings stated, the Personnel Committee directed us to look at some various
Explanation that I received back, it has to do with the weighting of the demographics of the group. Due to the support staff previously being on their own plan design, which now we are trying to incorporate them into this plan design, it's not the greatest explanation in the world, but it had to do with basically the formula of them deriving the rates. And that was the best explanation I could really get out of that. So certainly, if somebody wants a more detailed explanation, I could request it in writing from the underwriting department at Dean Health Plan.
So when we look at it district-wide, if we stay with status quo plans, the increased cost to the district would be approximately $400,000. You can see there on the bottom, or eight point six-three percent.
Can you spend just a little time again talking about what the status quo impact is to employees?
Sure. So on the far right, we annualized the employee contribution increase or decrease based on which plan. So a single on the POS PPO would see an additional increase of about $90 a year, the family about $200 a year. Under the HMO plan, a single employee plan would be an increase of about $120 a year. And the family would actually see a decrease of about $55 a year.
And when we go through each one of these, if you would highlight that employee change in cost, I would appreciate it.
Sure.
Or is everything else is status quo with last year's pro?
On this page, yes. Everything is status quo. Deductibles, copays, prescription drugs. So Option A, these are in no specific order, but Option A is, we would give, and this what you'll see on every option, we would give the option to the employee to choose between a PPO, POS, or an HMO. We have eighty-five percent of our claims are with Dean doctors, so that's why we thought offering up the option to employees, allow them to choose if they wanted to be on a HMO or POS. And they can choose the monetary effect on their paycheck. So the difference here is we, let's see, let me make sure you. The deductible for each plan would be $100 for single, $200 for family. That is a change from the HMO plan that we currently offer, that's a 200, 400. So everyone would have the 100, 200 deductible. We would increase the ten dollar, the copay, $10 from 20 to 30. And there would be an increase to the Tier Two and Tier Three prescription drugs by $10 each. So right now, it's five, 15, and 25. And it would go up to five, 25, and 35. So here you'll see the increase to, and you'll still see increases mainly across the board. But an increase to someone on the POS PPO, single employee, would be about $50 a year compared to the $87 a year.
That's the premium difference.
This is the annual, annual premium difference, not monthly annual.
And it's just premiums, obviously, the drug situation is.
Right. The increase for a family on this plan would be about $120 compared to the $200 if we remain status quo. If a single or a family wanted to change from the POS PPO to the HMO, they would see a reduction in their premiums on an annual basis, about $25 for a single and about $55 for a family. Looking at the second group, which is the aides, food service, and kid stop employees, if they decided to switch from the HMO to a POS PPO, they would see an increase of $700 on a yearly basis for a single, or about $385 for a family. If they chose to stay on the HMO plan, a single would increase $375 per year. The family contribution would go down about $330 per year. And if you remember, the increased cost to the district on the status quo plan was almost $400,000. Here, we're looking at an increase of about $235,000. Any questions on that plan?
Do we have percentages of our current population that are on the point of service?
We do on my computer.
Okay.
I can.
Almost all are, Doug. Almost everybody is. Only ones that are not are really the support staff.
Right.
Previously. Everybody's been on the point of service up until now.
So up until now, everybody's on point of service?
Yeah, they still get.
Not on Dean or the HMO?
Not on HMO. They have, just to reiterate, what we're offering, recommending is that the district offer an HMO to everybody. So those individuals who may not be high utilizers, are comfortable going in the Dean network all the time, can take advantage of the savings.
Well, what I heard was eighty-five percent of our population use Dean doctors anyway.
Right.
Right? So the twenty percent that does the eighty, if you will, the big rocks are already in place. That point of service and HMO don't make that much difference. They will get the same doctors, the same services, and the same location. But instead of being under a point of service, we're recommending an HMO because there would be significant cost savings.
Yes, they want.
Correct.
It's their option.
But I mean, nothing's changing for the individual. It's eighty-five percent of the time, it's the same doctor and it's the same facility.
Right.
And it's the same services available.
The question I have, kind of just going along that line, is when we talk about plans, and again, I know somebody that's on a plan that's where most of their employees are in Madison, so they're not on a Dean plan, yet they have employees up here. But they're still able to access the same doctors. Would there be any advantage in saying, "We're putting everybody on there, but they have that option to use a doctor outside of the service"? Cost?
Well, I'm not sure if I'm following what you're.
What I'm saying is, everybody's on the same plan, but you may be able to say that, is there some way that we could do that to get the lowest cost of the plan, yet be able to have those employees who are obviously maybe not in this, their families don't live in the Dean area, but they can still access doctors?
No.
No.
They either have to choose the point of service or the HMO.
Okay. So that's the choices we've got. Again, I didn't say that.
Right.
I'm not pushing, I'm just saying, is there that option?
No.
If I could ask the board, if we could please allow Ms. Baldwin to get through Option B and C, and if you have questions.
Okay.
Dan's not going anywhere.
Okay.
Please write them down, save them.
Sure.
Just so that we can kind of keep a continuity between the explanations on the plans. I would appreciate it.
Okay.
And then just on the bottom of every plan, I listed the savings for an employee in a district, an employee and the district, for every employee that might switch from the POS PPO to the HMO. And that savings is the sum of the $52, or for instance, the $76,000, the $52 that they would see plus the $2376 savings moving to the HMO plan. So I've listed that out for the employee and the district on every option. Option B, again, choice of PPO or HMO, same deductible, $100, $200 for each plan. And this one would just have the $10 increase to the Tier Two, Tier Three prescriptions, but not the $10 increase to the copay. I do want to point out, Option B and C are still estimates. I think they're pretty good estimates, but we haven't got final numbers from Dean on these yet. For this plan, a single on the current system would see a $67 increase per year, whereas a family would see a $150 increase per year on their premium contributions. If those same singles and families were to change to HMOs, the single would see about a $10 a year decrease in their premium and the family a $32 decrease in their premium. Looking at the other category, the aides, food service, and kid stop, if the people current, if they would switch to POS PPO, they would see a $180 increase for a single plan and a $527 increase for a family plan. If they were to stay on the HMO plan that they're currently on, singles would see about a $100 a year increase in their premium contribution, whereas families would see a $245 decrease in their annual contribution. Again, if you remember back to the first slide, status quo, we were talking about a $400,000 increase in premiums to the district. This plan would be about $300,000 increase to the district. And then finally, Option C, again, the option to the employee to choose, the 100, 200 dollar deductible. This time, we're looking at a $10 increase to the office copay from 20 to 30 and no increase to prescription copays. Again, the single and family PPO, people that are currently on it, single would see about a $70 increase annually to their contribution for their premiums. Family about $165 per year. If those same people were to choose to move to an HMO plan, they would save about $10 a year for a single and $20 a year for a family. Looking at the other group of employees, if they were to choose to move from a HMO to a PPO, they would see a $185 increase for a single and a $575 increase for a family plan. And that's the employee contributions. If those same people were to stay on the HMO, a single plan would cost them about $100 more every year, and the family would see a reduction of about $200 a year. And the cost to the district for this option would be about $330,000.
Couple of questions.
Yes.
In the original status quo model, just hypothetically, if the status quo would be to maintain with the exception of the ability to switch from POS to HMO, do we have any way to calculate what each one of those would save the district?
We can.
Okay. I mean, just hypothetically. Also, educate me, there is or is not an option right now for them to be in an HMO?
District is not made available.
Okay, so we have no way of knowing what the response would be to that because we haven't done that?
Right.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understand.
A question about the availability of the same doctors under POS and HMO. Again, I want to make sure that I understand correctly, eighty-five percent of the current utilization are doctors that cover both POS and HMO.
The eighty-five percent of the utilization today of these people of your group are using Dean doctors, which what we're saying is if your staff members go to Dean doctors and that's all they're utilizing, if they went to the HMO concept, they're saving money by doing so. The point of service, what the point of service does, gives your staff members the opportunity, if somebody has some crazy illness that takes place that they don't feel comfortable, they want to go to a UW doctor. For whatever reason, you know, their friend told them this guy's the best in the world, gal's the best in the world, and they want to go to him, that's what the point of service currently allows them to do. In the HMO setting, they have to stay inside the Dean network for their primary care services.
But the Dean network extends well beyond Baraboo.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we're talking about a pretty substantial group of physicians. If they're in the HMO and they need a specialist recommended or referred out of the HMO, are there provisions for that?
Dean will, if they can't do something, they will refer something outside of their network. In all honesty, they're not going to do that unless they can't do it. So, for example, I have a staff member that died of brain cancer, and she was trying to go see a specialist at UW because they had, it was basically clinical-type stuff. Dean didn't want to do that. They relented and finally did it. And, you know, so that wasn't much fun, okay, for somebody in the last stages of their life to be fighting with an insurance company. That's, and I don't scare anybody, that's just a scenario that is real life to me that I saw. But that's one, you know, point one percent, point five, you know, one percent of the time. When I see eighty-five percent of your claims data is already going to Dean doctors, for that person, a single young person coming to the district, young guy, you know, they don't go to the doctor very often unless they're dragged there, they might take the HMO just to save a couple bucks.
Say that, say that I'm a new hire to the district and I, we have an option of POS or HMO, and I decide to do the HMO. Is it a two-way street if two years from now, my situation changes and I want to go to a POS? Is that fluent back and forth?
I would say a renewal time will be, the employees would have the option to elect back, you know, assuming you're still with them. You know, who knows what the health insurance world's going to look like in two years.
And we do know of a few things that Dean doesn't cover that they would refer out, and that's pediatric cancer.
Right.
And organ transplants.
Right. That goes to UW automatically.
The question that Kevin asked about the fact that we haven't offered an HMO to our teachers in the past, so we don't have any idea of the numbers. Have you seen, that might make that choice. Have you seen in other organizations, do you have experience making, offering this choice to other organizations? Knowing how many people then, what percentage of people opt?
It's a really good question, and usually it's steered by premium contribution by the employer. You know, if the employer is trying to steer people to the HMO, they're obviously going to take the HMO. If there's no difference in price, a lot of people will just take. If there's no difference in price, a lot of people will just take, keep the point of service. You know, if there's not a big difference in that. So, you know, in this case, it's going to be pretty unique. Martha and I have already talked informally about setting up education days if the district decides to offer this, which I don't know why you wouldn't. I mean, even if we match up whatever plan design you have for the point of service you pick, I'd recommend you match an HMO exactly like it. And then what we'd do is we'd have educational meetings set up over a couple of week period for, just to try to explain people and give them the information they need to make a decision as to what it means. Because a lot of people get confused about the two and what they're really losing or what they're gaining, okay? And it's not going to be for everybody. I mean, there's not, we know there's people using the UW system, we can see it in the claims reports. So, they're not going to move, okay? They might have some situation going on that they, you know, whatever. But what this does is allows your staff members, if you chose, happen to choose, for example, option A, they'd save two-hundred-and-fifty bucks a year between the difference between an increase of status quo and going to the HMO if they wanted to save, it was about money, you know? So, it's just a little more flexibility for your staff, your staff, so.
Well, I also want to acknowledge Ms. Renzi's comments from our teachers and staff's point of view, which is that they're looking, given the current situation, at a continual challenge to their take-home of which the transition that the district has been forced into by the legislature increases their contribution. And now we also have to look at ways in which to balance the additional costs of healthcare across the district to the issues that have been raised. And I think that's something the board has to look at very carefully as well.
Dan, could you walk me through if the board decides to go with an option that allows an HMO option for the employee, what does the employee have to do? I mean, obviously you have education involved, but what do I, the employee, have to do to switch from one to the other? I mean, how complicated is it?
We'll get a form together that we'll let the employee sign off that says they want the HMO or point of service. And they'll elect that. We'll send all that information and Dean, he'll process it and that's it.
Probably get a new ID turns, I think.
I'm thinking, you know, they might get a new ID card for one-one. Again, these changes are all.
So, whatever paperwork I need to do could be done at one meeting and?
Oh, I mean, it's, they could do it from their desk and scan it down to Martha or Craig and it'd be done. So, that part is the easy part.
Do we have a metric on, obviously, if I said status quo, it's nine percent increase in cost. Do we have a metric that we can compare on a national or statewide basis of what the insurance cost has gone on?
I can tell you it's about that. Most everyone in my groups is getting at a minimum of a ten percent increase right now. Doesn't matter if it's a four-person group or four-hundred. I mean, that's about what's going on. Because medical trend is still ten percent. Your guys', your utilization is actually, correct me if I'm wrong Martha, it's pretty good. As soon as we get some more data from Dean, we think we'll have some more leverage, you know, once there's more information out there. But the district itself is running a pretty good, what we call, loss ratio, premium to claims paid.
Sure. I mean, we have a wellness program, obviously that's one of the things that we want to see.
Right.
Mainly, I would like to see a benefit to our employees for the wellness, but obviously there's going to be some insurance cost ramifications.
Right.
So, I mean, is this just an estimate at this point?
No, this is, these are the numbers.
Okay, but you said we might have improved utilization.
I'm talking about for 2015.
Okay. All right. Did we have an improved utilization from this year to last year?
It was about the same, little percentages are too better, Martha, if I remember right.
How much history do we have now? Is it eight?
Well.
Eighteen, most?
Yeah, roughly.
Yeah. So, just another year of claims, that's what he's getting at, will hopefully provide us the leverage next year.
Okay.
Depending on what happens. You know, how in your world.
Well, the reading. First of all, that leverage only goes so far. I mean, how many meetings have we sat in with Dean reps and you can talk about market utilization and the fact that we're a healthy group, and that only gets you so far because there are answers, a shoulder shrug that says, well, the costs are this. You know, even though they're the ones driving the cost. I guess in fairness, Emily, the question that you asked that's the most important is when does this stop to me? And I didn't want you to leave without hearing the answer, and the answer is it doesn't. Quite honestly, this doesn't stop. I've been doing this a long time in this health insurance game and this is an annual rite that the insurance companies go through. And these are big numbers that are on the table here and up on the screen. And yet they have the opportunity to be much larger depending on what the healthcare market does. We can only affect our premiums based on market competition and right now we're sitting in the middle of Dean Central. So, there's not a lot of market competition against Dean, although they're, you know, a quality provider, so that's a good thing. Our wellness program can have a certain amount of impact on that as well as education about plan design. Our plan design are the modifications that are going to be talked about each and every year. What I would suggest when you talk about collaboration is sitting down and with the personnel committee and talking about plan design. What impacts rates? What is driving these numbers? Because that's the understanding that we all need to share. Is it high users that are driving the numbers and it's a small group of users that are driving up the premiums for all? Well, if that's the case, then you can adjust the plan design so that high users, that the users of the plans pay more for the plans. That way it's not punishing everybody. Is it not? Is it a balanced approach? And we want to keep our copays and drug cards as low as possible? Well, if that's the case, then we take a look at options. Nobody wants to make a knee-jerk reaction to a premium increase. We know a premium increase is coming this year, we know one's coming next year. Nobody wants it, you know, and nobody really can afford it. You know, all of the users are saying, hey, that's more money out of my pocket. You know, and the finance committee going, hey, it is a big number, it's four-hundred thousand dollars, where are we going to, what are we going to do? It doesn't have to be draconian, it doesn't have to be this, oh, if we don't do something, we're going to have to slash and burn attitude. It's just, how do we manage these costs and how do we move forward? So, I think the best bet is, in the spirit of collaboration, just let's form some groups that can meet with the personnel committee and educate ourselves about what drives these numbers because they're going to keep coming at us every year.
I would just like to add to that, that there are other states that are doing innovative things the way Wisconsin used to do innovative things. And those states that have adopted open market plans find their increases to be roughly four to five percent rather than nine or 10 percent. It's just another thing for all of us to take into consideration as citizens of this state and citizens of this nation in terms of the question of how do we stop this insanity?
I would ask that the board, if you have any questions that come up in relation to the options that are, or have been presented, that you direct those to Ms. Baldwin. And undoubtedly, we will seek an answer from Mr. Lewison to questions that we can't answer, that Ms. Baldwin can't answer. And there may be something that comes to mind after this meeting that you want an answer to, so please, if that's okay with Ms. Baldwin, let's direct questions to her.
We do not have to make a decision tonight.
No, we do not have to make a decision tonight.
Go ahead.
And I think that, you know, there are obviously options on the table. One thing that to me is not an option, that is, you know, we need to discuss with the teachers and the administrators because it's not just the teachers that are affected by the change in the plans. Moving forward, you know, a year ago, as a personnel committee, you know, we talked about doing that, well, the year's passed and we really haven't. So, we need to make sure that we follow through, we, the board, follow through and make those commitments to what we commonly tout and refer to as collaborative efforts, so. Again, unless anybody has any other questions, we can certainly end this particular part of the agenda and I'll go find our two board members that exited. Mr. Mcnevin, who's faster than I, will find them.
I would like to request that those of us who are not on the personnel committee, if in fact, but still will be making a vote on this in the long run, if we can hear, sit in on the collaborations with the teachers and administrators, all employees. If we have the opportunity to do that, I would appreciate it.
Okay. So, what's the score, Gary?
I couldn't get it, I left my TV.
We continue an open session and have been rejoined by the two board members that exited during the insurance discussion. We are on new business, letter B, resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in an amount not to exceed four million dollars pursuant to section sixty-seven point one-two, sub-eight, A-one. And for that, I'm going to turn to Chair of Finance, Mr. Mcnevin.
The finance committee, Martha sent it out to eight banks plus three local banks, so eleven total, to see where transborrowing, we call it, it's a four-million-dollar borrowing to bridge the cash flow gap until taxes start arriving in in July. The rate that was the lowest was RW Baird at point four-nine, or four-three-nine. The closest local rate was River National at point five-five. It is about fifty-two-hundred dollars higher, so the finance committee recommends going with a little bit of RW Baird. So.
Having a motion and a second to utilize RW Baird for the temporary borrowing discussion?
This is a standard practice.
This is every year.
That we have to go through every year.
Every year.
I think it's just important that everyone understand this is to, as you've indicated, cover the expenses that we have between the time that the tax revenues enter into our revenue stream so that we can pay the bills before that.
Who did we utilize last year?
Bearwood National.
Okay, so this would be a change from what we did last year. Any further discussion? Hearing none, having a motion and a second. Those in favor of the resolution signify by saying a aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Brings us to C, approval of the public address system replacement slash upgrade at Al Berman Elementary. That came from the Building, Grounds, and Transportation Committee. Mr. Cummings?
Ah, yes, it's a safety update because the audio is illegible and right now they use a system of bells for evacuation, so it's a the recommendation from the Buildings and Grounds Committee that we update the PA system down there for safety reasons and also because it's going to be, have to be done shortly anyway.
And that recommendation is to utilize who, for what amount?
Select sound for seventeen thousand thirty dollars.
Okay. You entering that as a motion, Mr. Cummings?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Having a motion and a second for the upgrade update of the public address system at Abe for the figure of seventeen thousand?
Fifty.
Fifty dollars? Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried, brings us to D, discussion of potential office space and property adjacent to Al Berman. That is not one and the same, those are two separate, separate issues. I would like to address the potential office space first. That came from the Building, Grounds, and Transportation Committee. Mr. Cummings, if you want to give a quick background on what we did a week ago Monday?
I defer back to you because I believe you've got more information about.
We were contacted about the property that would be commonly referred to as Qualley Hartman. It's now Boardman Clark, which is on the corner of Oak and Fifth. For the potential future use for the district for offices, so the Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation Committee along with our Director of Buildings and Grounds and Martha. And we were later tagged by our other board member of concern in regards to the office space, Mr. Mcnevin.
Of concern.
We took a tour of the building. You know, I guess anybody can chime in with what your initial reaction was. I mean, I think that the building certainly has much more to offer than City Hall did when we looked at that. Structurally sound, doesn't have any leaks, doesn't have any roof issues. Probably would be able to be listed as a shelter because of the way that it's constructed. But some concerns and questions came up in regards to what they were asking for. They're more interested in selling rather than leasing the property. When pressed for any idea of what their expectation was, the answer was not forthcoming. It is public information that it is assessed for the tax rule purposes at seven-hundred-and-five thousand dollars. So, I, you know, the Buildings and Grounds Committee can certainly have additional discussions. I'm not sure that it's not anything that they expressed to us that they are looking to do in the next month, six months. Currently, the law firm of Boardman Clark is leasing the building from the original attorney owners of the building, who built the building. So, they are, those that occupy the office are essentially renting it back. They didn't indicate a timeline as to when they thought they wanted to get out. They're just at a point in their careers where I think they're just trying to, you know, look at Plan A, B, and C. You know, there are some concerns in regards to parking. But. But.